Yes, Crowns letters A throughout.
Good morning Commissioners. This is to attend various Board of Building Standards meetings, appeals, court hearings, training sessions, software and code related matters, continuing education classes, conferences, seminars, and daily business within the state of Ohio with an estimated cost of 2,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Third Courts. Good morning Commissioners, I am Jim. Sir requests for travel for the Court's office in the year 2025 to attend various conferences, training, seminars, etc. in the amount of 14,000 that's non-general funds.
Thank you, sir. And Hazmat? Anybody knows what that stands? Anna, would you be able to do that?
Commissioners, this is on behalf of Hazmat to attend state training, conferences, tech meetings, training, seminars, etc. within the state of Ohio for the year 2025 estimated at $3,000.
Letter D, Risk Management, Kathy Job.
Morning, everyone. This is for in-state travel for 2025 for all of the listed acronyms, but it's all basically Corsa, CLICO, CCAO, Training, Safe, DPWC stuff, $5,000, and it's not general funds.
And sanitary. Janetti or Jill?
Good morning, everyone. Letter E is Travel for Sanitary. This is to attend various CSEAO, SCEIGO, WWA, Ohio EPA, ECAO, USDA, Ohio Development Agencies, ARC, DDVG meetings, seminars, etc. within the state of Ohio and any other destinations for the year 2025 estimated at $3,000, and these are non-general funds.
Very good. Okay, and Veterans.
Good morning, everyone. This is a request for travel to attend Ohio Veterans Home Quarterly Meetings, BFW Council Administration Convention, and our OSA CVSO Training and Accreditation for the Year. Estimated cost 20,000 general fund and for accreditation.
Hey, thank you, Carol.
Motion for approval of number one, journal entries travels A through F.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes, agreements, letter A through F, Convention and Visitors, make.
Good morning Commissioners. Letter A is Amendment Number Two with Paul J. Kanter CPA for Hotel Lodging Tax Audits until December 31st of 2025, at no change than the amount of $10,000 as a non-general fund. And B is an agreement with Travel Host of Northeast Ohio for 2025 advertising services in the amount of $13,025 non-general.
Engineers?
Yes, letter C is an agreement with Spider for County, Warrior, Warriors, number 59, and estimated amount of $3,770.17.
And we need to make an exception to the 5,774 point.
And let, D and E.
Letter P is in agreement with the Howland Company, who has a control on healthy homes work, $20,000 for three homes. Letter C is in agreement with the Howland Company as well, who has a control on healthy homes work at 154 Dunlap, $26,455.
All right. And Sheriff, Strife, yours or chosen?
I'll cover it. Good morning Commissioners, good morning Nancy. We are entering an agreement with Securus in which we're changing the way that we, it's the inmate phone system and the profits received from the inmate phones in the county jails.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol?
Motion for approval of number two, agreements A through F.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes, change orders A through D, and talk for you.
A, B, and C are all changers with the Howland Company LLC. A is that has a control on healthy homes work at 2318 Fifth Avenue, $3,375. B is that has a control on healthy homes work at 120 Illinois, $1,130. And C is that has a control on healthy homes work at 125 Board, $680.
Thank you, and sanitaries.
Letter D is sanitary, a change order number one and final with JS Bova Excavating Inc. This is for the Lake Milton Waterline Replacement Improvement Number 513. This is a decrease in the amount of $68,750, and these are non-general funds.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Motion for approval of number three, change orders A through D.
Second, roll.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes, appointments A and B, I'll take those. Letter A, three point following individuals to serve Mahoney County Convention and Visitors Bureau effective January 1st, 2025, two years, Stacy Butler, Ryan Martino, and Katie Seminera DeForo. Would you like to make any comments?
These are just reappointments, so they have been an absolute asset to our advisory board for the last few years, so we are excited to have them back on for another term.
Any of them here?
No, I think we have four left.
Yeah, we do. No problem. And letter B, pointing to following the good deals to serve the Mahoney County Convention Visitors Bureau effective January 1st, 2025 for two years, Jennifer Pratt, John Travolene, Aspasia, Lyris, or Naki, any comments?
We're very excited to have these three new appointments. Jennifer Pratt is the Director of Sales at Waypoint Courtyard, Spring Hill and Town Hill, or Town Place Suites, so she's really got her finger on the pulse of what's going on in the lodging area of the community. John Travolene is the Park Director out at Lake Milton, and Aspasia is co-owner of Penguin City, so we're very excited to have these three new appointments, really knowing what's going on in the county and what's how best we can work it.
Thanks much. Carol?
Motion for approval of the number four, appointments A and B.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes, resolutions, number one.
Motion for the approval of resolutions, number one, addition.
Second, roll call? Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes. Two A, record of bids, engineers?
Letter A is Armani 780 S69, Walker Mill Road, Richard replacement.
Motion for the approval of number two, record of bids, A.
Please, second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffigan?
Yes. Commissioners, resolution regarding the vacation of part of Lynn Park Road in the county pursuant to Ohio Revise Code. Sorry, for the township, thank you, pursuant to Ohio Revise Code Section 555.3.01. That is VTS.
Erica, she'll tell us.
Erica, you know what that is? I don't know, I don't know. All right. Audrey, you want to do the other?
Item B is a resolution authorizing the lease agreement with Meridian Healthcare for space at the Mahoney Valley Campus of Care, and basically with this and another one that's going on, all of the buildings will be occupied and taken, so we ought to get. This is our vision for Commissioner Rigetti, and part supported by Anthony and Dave, and it has been, it's gonna be, and it is, a jewel in the county's. I know. I mean, it's been a while. Item D is a resolution to adopt the cash advance year in policy, which I missed C, because that's gonna be June, I was gonna say C, resolution authorizing appointment of outside council pursuant to higher vice code section 309.09 and 305.14, Mazznick, Razznick and Ryder Company in amount of 25,000.
Good morning Commissioners and Audrey. We need to modify this line item to reflect the appointment of Todd Raskin in addition to Mazznick, Raskin, and Ryder, he's retired, and this is to handle, Attorney Raskin was serving as a special prosecutor under my administration, obviously my administration ends on Friday, which means his appointment would also cease, and this is a case that he has been working on, it was an appeal taken on a petition that was dismissed about a month ago, and he is familiar with it, and his firm has done a lot of work with the county, and they are familiar with the history and the background.
Thank you. And letter D? Oh, and B?
Jenny, good morning.
Good morning.
D is the resolution to adopt the year-end cash advance policies incorporated into the budgetary processes for the county in the amount of 1.2 million dollars, and E is the resolution authorizing the CAG Board of Directors to enter into agreement for the disposition of CAG property in terms of the necessary funds for the transition to HARP, and Drax County Auditor to transfer the funds from the general fund to the CAG fund.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll speak briefly about the CAG going over to Marx. Years ago, Austen Town Boardman, Mahoney County, joined together to create a radio system. We've done what I feel is a fantastic job over the past six years, but we've matured to the point now to where we're ready for the state to come in, take over the tower system, which we will maintain, the PSAPs, Marx will now maintain the towers.
Yes, and Austin Township has done their resolution, Boardman, I'm a, the Santos is here, and they have done the resolution also wanting to go, bring up Board of Directors forward to CAG in order to go forward with Marx, negotiate that. Boardman will be doing theirs the first of the year, so this is a great step for the county. I commend all the commissioners and all the trustees, we need the county forward in this direction.
Thank you. Other F, engineers?
Yes, letter F is a resolution approving a moral obligation payment, $2,141.42 to value industrial trucks for services to one of our fleet vehicles.
And Grants Management, Anna?
Commissioners, this is to provide resolutions approving the addendums to the following agencies funded by the American Rescue Plan Act as follows. The Mahoney County Community Improvement Corps in the amount of $234,028.50. The sanitary engineering department is changing the scope to include architecture, engineering, and construction for the projects that were previously awarded and entering into a moral obligation with the sanitary department for those projects, and an amendment to extend the West Reserve Port Authority Agreement for the campus of care work.
Thank you, Anna. And let, Phil?
H is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $4,800 to Howland Company for some required work after the fact, some, our New York State of Ohio grant, 1970s, and L is a resolution authorizing the President of the Board to accept the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program grant, partnership with panel of Struthers for $1 million, the year 2024 to 2025. Okay?
Thank you. And sanitary, Eric?
Letter J is a resolution approving the appointment of one mechanic two for the department.
Very good. Carol?
Motion for approval of number three, resolutions A through J.
Second, roll call.
Mrs. Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remito Rigetti?
Yes.
Yes, so for the good of the order, Audrey, what's your orders?
Should we do this first before we do the good or bad? Let's do the presentation so it's on the.
I hope it has a reference. It's not royal.
Just be, just, that's not the most sturdy, like, attractive. You know what?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want me to? Three of us, and Audrey and all of our staff. So I'll cry, cry at everything. My God, I'm bad. I wanted to, this is for our guy Dave, God bless you Dave, you've been with us forever, and we just think that this is better than one of those diamonds you might want to hunt. So we thought you would like this even better than that, it shows all need, I have more to say for the money. So you want to do it, Anthony?
You count it out.
One, two, three. We have to be very careful to be not to love, don't you? And this is all the projects. One of his passions is a dog, and then he'll be in change, his animal charities and working with animals, and so he's out at his best, along with everything else that he's done with the county, he would appreciate, and the 100-year, and so there's 25 years, oh, the time capsule.
Time capsule, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If I take this out of the thing, we'll put it up here, and then everybody can sign, will be able to sign it too, so only names though, because it's only so much space, okay?
Thank you.
And we also have some cards that will go up on front too, so if you want to get right, a thank you or a note today on there, you can too, okay, because I know not everybody's gonna be able to speak, but I'll let Anthony be here. One of the only speak person there.
Thank you so much, that's very kind of you. Well, what we would like to do now, while our friends, the audience, would like to begin with elected officials, I'd like to say anything first on behalf of Commissioner David Ditzler.
I'll go. You know, it's bittersweet, you know, because I'm walking out too, but it's truly been a pleasure working with you over the years, we've had some fun times, lots of fun memories, from strip clubs to god knows what else, hearings, we're rallying, but truly it's been an honor to work with you, you guys have done an amazing job, you've done an amazing job, and you will truly be missed, and I will always look back at our time here very fondly, and I, my life is better because I have been able to work with all of you and you, so, good, best of luck.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just preface that and say that life lies for everything, Gina, and she references back in the Austin town days, when her and I were deposed by the Hotel California owners to shut their strip club down when they opened a hotel and it turned into a strip club, you know, so we, we had a lot of hours in front of the cameras, a lot of hard work, and that goes back at least 17, 18 years ago, so you were fighting on behalf of our community, just like you have been for our county all the way up till today, so God bless you, thank you.
Next, elected officials?
I would just like to thank you for everything you've done, not just for me personally, but for the city of Struthers. When I first started five years ago, you were one of my first phone calls, I was clueless in the very beginning, so a lot of going through the toll bin and a lot of the things that our city went through and a lot of the changes, you've always been there for us and never forgot about the city of Struthers, so thank you for all the two of you.
And you. Anyway, I say without hesitation, always, you're the best man here to know, and you do a phenomenal job, because at the end of the day, you're a phenomenal person, and good people do good things, and I'm always proud to stand beside you and work off staff for everything that you have to do, and not only Struthers, but all the charities that you work for and everything else, so God bless you.
Next.
David, on behalf of Austen Town, we all couldn't be here today, but you know, you and I go way back for quite some time, some funny stories, even with the old administration, I see that some of them are here and they're probably gonna speak too, I don't want to take all of Ken's jokes, so to speak, and what you've done for our township over the years as a trustee is just overwhelming. We were talking about it, we put a list together, it's way too long, I'm not gonna tie up everybody's time, but on behalf of Austen Town and the current board and administrator, and our department heads, you know, Andy, who just recently retired, and Gavaliere, Jim, and I might forget Martha, Darren, Darren, of course, right? On behalf of all of us, thank you for everything you've done as a township trustee and as our county commissioner, thank you.
And, you know, I've never called my residents any, any place outside of Austin Town, and I was proud to be the only Austen Town resident to serve as county commissioner, so it's always been, you know, there's been people from Austen Town that know residents, you know, so I'm proud to have represented Austen Town, and, you know, so I have a lot of time on my hands now, so I may start coming to your meetings. Thank all of you for the job you're doing.
We don't do public comments anymore.
Thank you. Dan? Mr. Yama?
Morning, everyone. Dave, you and I first were exposed to each other, I was a fairly newly elected councilman at Struthers, and you were the Democrat Party Chair for a while, but then, you know, there's not a lot of interaction between an Austen Town Township trustee and a Struthers councilman, but there is some, we worked together then, then we both end up at the county, and we've done an awful lot of work together since we've both been here, as well as my office with the Commissioner's office, and also the County Land Bank, each, yourself and each of the Commissioners rotate serving on the board of the County Land Bank, and I'm very grateful for all the work that you've been able to accomplish there. So Dave, I wish you nothing but the best as you move forward, my deepest condolences, though my sincere condolences go to Jenny, because she's gonna be around the house a lot of the time, and she's gonna have to deal with that. No, Dave, it's been my pleasure, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Andy, you're so right, you've done a great job, and I really enjoy, you know, as well as I have with all the county officials, but you're at the top of my list. My, my mother loved Dan Yama, like he was her own son, but she loved him like she had starry eyes from her. She used to say that Dan Yama was the best looking man she ever saw. My, my mother, she, she went to her grave loving Dan Yama, God bless her, God bless you, Sarah, you're a good person.
Thank you. Next.
Norlyn. Good morning. Can't see.
Can't see. I just want to thank you, Dave, you've been the best, always been, my office has never needed anything that you guys have accomplished, and I appreciate everything you've done, and I appreciate your friendship, and you've always made everything right, thank you. No, good luck.
Norlyn's the only one I know that her husband could stand up and tell and speak on her behalf at a forum and do a yeoman's job, you know, so you have him trained well, you're good. I'm telling you, God bless you, Norlyn, you, you've been the best, the best recorder in the state of Ohio for as long as I've been, as long as you've been there, so, God bless you.
Yeah, any more elected officials? How about some of our department heads, supervisors?
I will. Dave, it's been a pleasure working with you, all your expertise, I remember the first major project I had with you, and it was replacing the boilers in the Justice Center, I knew then, I better know total cost factors, and all the way through every major project, I knew total cost factors, because I never knew what you were gonna ask, but I better be prepared to answer. I'm gonna be seeing Dave, well, his house anyway, I'm always on the bike trail going through Austen Town, so you're not getting rid of me, but if you're doing labor outside, I'm gonna pedal faster.
Don't make eye contact.
Thank you.
I consider myself in your category, you know, the longer we're here, the more tribal knowledge we accumulate, you know, so you've always been a wealth of knowledge up in every one of us along the way, there's so many different projects, you're a good person, you're doing amazing job, thank you.
Thank you so much, David.
Anna, do you assist?
Thank you, Commissioners. David, you're the best, right? Always there with the compliment, all the time, I appreciate it. I just wanted to say a few words actually to the board and recognize their unification over the past four years, their consideration of all the projects that we've put through in addition to your normal daily business, this four years has seen public assistance from FEMA, emergency rental assistance, CARES Act money, and last of all, ARPA money, and which totals somewhere around $65 million came into the county in the last four years, so I appreciate your dedication and working together and distributing those funds in a timely manner, because they were all on a deadline, so I just want to say I appreciate you and best of luck.
Thanks.
I used to be in charge of a department, special projects, and then when I got here, she was the department, you know, so, I mean, you've, you've stood up, the rest of us have stood on your shoulder to make us be able to see all the things that you're doing behind the scenes, so, that amazing job, you keep everything moving in the right direction, you know, you're, you're the gear, you know, you really, you do a lot, you get little recognition, but everybody knows that you're the one behind the scenes that's cranking the handles, so thank you so much. Let me save everybody a little bit of hand space, let's clap at the end, that way, you know, I always sat back and said, you know, why don't somebody say, let's save our applause at the end, so everybody gets a rest. say, let's save our applause at the end, so everybody gets a rest. We'll just go maybe row by row. I'll tap.
As someone who's known Dave for many years and now one of the newer directors, so now we get to work together in a very different way and we have just thanked you as a resident of Austintown for everything you've done as a resident of Austintown and it's been amazing working with you for the short time, but I take solace in knowing that I'll always be able to find you at tracks.
See you go to tracks?
Once in a while.
So Megan, Megan, there was a friend of mine at an event and I was standing there and he came up to me and says, hey, do you know that woman over there? I said, I think I do, you know, I, I know, I know her family, yeah, he says, why don't you introduce me? And I said, okay, you know, and I took him over and her brother was standing there and he goes, this is my, you know, he was like his body, her bodyguard, his wife, his little sister, you know, and, and you know, I got to go to their wedding, eight years ago now?
Eight years.
Eight years ago, so you know, I was the fortunate one that got to introduce Megan and her husband together, her future husband.
And thank you for that.
I don't, I don't know who would say thank you or who would say, you know, I, you know, you could give him a apple sandwich, but it's eight years long and running and good families, good people come together, so thank you for the great shot.
Dave, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you, I've only been in the office for the year now, but I don't know if it's going to keep Audrey in line when we're moving around the decimal places. You always knew everything, you had the numbers down.
You'll call me up and give me the numbers and tell me to make sure this is your last month.
I'm going to miss you.
I, I always called John Panjovino, you know? Well, I can tell his parents probably, but John Panjovino, so all the activity. You know, you did a great job, you know, you only screwed the decimal points up half as many times as me.
Me too.
So, you know, so we're, we're proud to have you on board at the county, so thank you.
I just want to say thank you, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here. You were my first conversation when I took this job and you weren't just my boss, you were my friend and my children's friends and it's not goodbye, it's a new chapter. Thank you for everything.
And we became friends after we hired you, so you know, I didn't know the family until you came on board and didn't want to take the job. We talked and, you know, I tried to calm the waters and ease it through and, you know, in, in my favorite baseball movie, For the Love of the Game, you know, when Kevin Costner's on the mound, I'll have to, I'll have to, I'll have to recite his line, I'll miss you most, Scarecrow. Really? No, Bob, this Heinz wore the leash.
Now I know.
Should have known the first.
He didn't wear the, he didn't wear the, you know, black and gold uniform on the football field.
Hey, real quick, I'll just say, because I gotta run, thank you, sir. All those calls, all right, I appreciate you and if the sheriff was here, he, he would be saying the same thing, you always answered, you always helped, thank you, you bet.
Ryan, would you like to go because we're going to go to the second row next?
I guess just you guys brought me in, so I feel one thank you for giving me my shot, get my foot in the door and everything, the energy you always brought to the second floor over there, got everybody going, I was always excited when you came and rattled the cages a little bit, going to miss you, but like everybody keeps saying, just another chapter.
Absolutely. Thank you. And when Ryan came on board, I told him that, you know, I walk into the office, there's twelve women in the same floor, I said, we need a little more testosterone added to this equation and I don't know if it had any impact, but then when Audrey brought, you know, the, the finalist, Sam Ryan was one of them, I said, thank God, another guy finally.
I got it because he needs some testosterone.
Oh, good, Ryan, you've done a great job, I appreciate you very much. Thank you. Okay, second row.
Good morning, Commissioners, you have watched the, the growth and the evolution of Mahoning County Land Bank since its inception, because we're still kind of new and clearly we wouldn't have done anything that we've done to date without your constant support, so thank you to all three of you. But Commissioner Ditzler, you have particular interest in the land bank and I think it's because you were a township trustee and you saw the ways that county land bank could deliver for local governments and so I want to thank you for especially, Anna mentioned the ARPA money recently and you kind of championed what the commissioners ultimately did in providing some matching funds so that where we could help local communities rid themselves of problem properties, we were able to, and for those who don't know, most of the communities got that done at no cost to them because the commissioners provided the match that was essential to unlocking that money. So thank you for that, thank you for challenging my assumptions along the way and helping me to grow also. I don't know how long it's going to take, but what you have done for Mahoning County is considerable and it's going to benefit several generations at the least, so thank you.
Kim Strachey, and everybody, and the mayor over here. Oh, I, I, I mean, our, our, Jim Hart, mayor from Sebring, he's on the land bank board, you know, as well, but you know, that, that was one of my favorite boards, you know, along with the Green Team and stuff because, you know, there's a lot of nuts and bolts that go on there, there's a lot of good things that happen, Kathy, you know, is keeping track of everything, you know, God bless her, she's a one man, one woman band over there too and Roger and there's just so many people over there that do a great job and really it, it's like Yama's position, it goes unnoticed, you know, I mean, by people that aren't directly involved and see the results, you know, and it's, it's great board, you do great things and I'm always proud to participate, Artie, you know, who, who doesn't want to work with Artie Spelman, you know, I mean, he's the best too, you know, such a great board, great things and I was always proud to be part of that land bank board with the mayors of Sebring, I think it's Anna Harv, you know, Eric Pinkerton passed away not too long ago, just great people because we, we never forgive the land.
I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, you have been so kind and so generous to us and your wife and you as a couple, amazing. I got a phone call like three years ago from the two of you and it meant so much to me and I so appreciate it, I didn't know you until you came in and we met at calling hours and stood there and talked and I said, I think I work for you. And from that moment on, you were such a kind, generous man, so I appreciate it.
I always give Megan a hard time because her husband's like, you know, Prince Michael, he, he, he's one of those guys, the rest of us were sending flowers and he's having a helicopter flown overboard and taken a few of how they mowed fifty acres to I Love You Mania. He hurts, he hurts all of husbands, you know, so. You and your family are phenomenal and you do a great job, God bless you, you worked with Jim for how long?
No, here.
Thank you.
Mr. Corano.
Well, I'll tell you what, I have stories that you cannot believe, but we'll keep those for some other place because I don't want to put them on television. You know, Dave was a student, he was a teacher, he was a colleague and he's always been my friend. He was a student at Fitch High School, he came in in nineteen seventy-three and in two weeks, everybody in the damn school knew him. The possibility, his, his personality plus, he's the only guy I know that could tell you that you're doing something wrong with a smile on his face and then if you don't do it right, the smile disappears. But he was my teacher, I became, he came in and talked me into running for a trustee. He explained me what a trustee had to do and so on and he gave me all the directions that I thought I'd need and I want and then I was his colleague. The information that this man does, you cannot believe unless you know him well. There's a lot of times people complain because Dave says, says something fast and immediately after someone makes a statement. The reason for that very simply is this man educates himself, he knows what the situations are before people have him and he knows what to say at the time to help them out or to shut them up. And he's been, he was a great colleague and when I was a state rep, I could come home, he could explain to me things that we needed and it was unbelievable how he was there, but I enjoyed always sitting down, having a simple drink with Dave Ditzler. The greatest thing that ever happened to him was he got married to the loveliest person in the world and the one person in this world that could stop him no matter what device, but they do it so beautifully. But he's been my friend all my life since then, my family's friend. The situation with Dave is something that I want to read because this he gave me a long time ago and he has it all the time and this is what he says about politics. I believe local government is about public service, not politics. That's why I work with Democrats, Republicans and Independents, who are our people and that is for one thing only, to enhance the quality of life in our community. David, you did a hell of a job, fantastic, don't go away.
And you've been like a brother, like a father, you know, you've been a tutor, you've been, you've been everything. You know, when I look at people that represent Austintown, I always look at George Popey as the, the female leader of Austintown and Grant, the male leader of Austintown, you know, and, and the two of you, I, I have nothing but respect for and God bless you. You know, Ken's the only one that when him and I got elected together, you would, you would be talking about different things and he'd say, I had you in my class and I said, Ken, I didn't have you in class, your class was a blow off class that people took. And I said, I had nothing but count, college math, I had nothing but numbers, economics and, and, and he goes, he says, no, 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 and I said, Ken, I didn't get a lot of As but I never got a C, I got all Bs and scattered NAs. I said, I always only was worried about being in the top ten percent of the class to go to college and he goes, he goes, everybody lies about their grades and I said, okay, you know, so about three months later, he comes walking into one of our meetings and he goes, by God, he says, you didn't lie and I said, what are you talking about? He throws down my transcripts from, from school and he goes, you weren't in the top ten, your grades were this and this and this and I go, where'd you get those? He goes, I can get anything. Yeah, Ken, you're a good friend for a while, time, your family's a big team, thank you for that.
Dave, on behalf of Pat, myself, Engineering Office, like to thank you for everything you've done for us, it's been a pleasure and I agree with Dan, Jenny's going to have a lot to do because she cannot be home, it's impossible, so good, good luck to you.
Thank you, I appreciate you and your family, Gina and Anna and Larry and I, I've known you and your family for, you know, mostly your, your family through your marriage, you know, for a hundred, your, your sister's marriage for a hundred, for a hundred years that they grew up on, on your side, alongside of me, in fact, God has my backyard, you know, when I grew up, you know, good people, good families, God bless you. When you say God bless Jenny, you work for Jenny, God bless you. Thank you. We'll start there.
Most people don't realize that when Dave was the township trustee in Austintown, I was responsible for the local task force, Dave was the fiscal agent, in fact, Diane was our fiscal officer and it ran flawlessly, we never had any problems out there, I think Dave was a big part of that at the time, you're responsible for my current appointment as well as Andy's wherever he went and we appreciate that and the faith you've put in us over the last few years and thank you.
Scott. Robin, I, just something quick, you know, Robin's the guy that, you know, he, he was in charge of the Mahoning Valley Drug Task Force there and so I came over to him one time, he used to have township boxes, sell all his cars off and, you know, Robin came over and there was a Jaguar S-type made by Ford back in the day, I don't even remember what year it was, but Robin said, hey, he says, that's a heck of a car, nobody's bidding on it, you know, and I said, well, everybody wants, you know, a three hundred dollar car, you're not a three thousand dollar car and he says, well, it's worth it, so I'm looking at it, looking at it, looking at it, I don't remember the numbers, it was so long ago, but Robin told me what a great car it was, I bid, the minimum bid on it that they had a reserve on and I was the only one that bid on it, well, I think I had doubled into it and I sold it for what the reserve was, I lost about two thousand dollars on the car because I said that I wouldn't own a foreign car, you know, so I tried to sell it because it was a Jaguar S-type even though it was made by Ford, but you know, thanks, Robin, for all your advice over.
The, the bottom line was we, we saw the car there and it was sitting and it, the money goes back into our trust fund.
Good, thank you for all the hats you've worn in Mahoning County, you're doing such a great job on behalf of all the residents, all the residents.
Scott. Dave, on behalf of the clerk of court's office, just want to wish you all the best, thank you for all you've done for our department over the years. I know we had some contentious budget hearings with Anthony Viva when you would bring up Detroit Tigers and Cleveland Guardians.
We were always the Indians in our.
You're, you're exactly right, but again, thanks for everything, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott, you and the, you and Tony Viva, I wish Tony was here because Tony was the most philosophical guy you could ever talk, you'd never believe, he taught your ear off, never let you eat, but you know, Scott is one of those people that I always said, if ever you die, somebody standing at the gates of heaven sorting people out, you walked down this road, you walked down this road, you walked down this, it would be Scott, because he, he is the guy that could make you feel comfortable no matter what arena, no matter what's going on, do a great job, thank you, Scott. Sorry.
I know, before anybody goes, if you have to leave, make sure you sign this before you go, you can come up and sign it, that's okay, doesn't matter where everybody talks.
Who's next to them?
Dave, it's been a pleasure and it's been an honor, you're on behalf of everybody at the prosecutor's office and me personally, I, I can just say, it's been great not only to know you as a friend, but to work with you and thank you.
I've known Karen's family, you know, her married family and her blood family for a lot of years, so Karen is married to David Gay, David Martin and, you know, his brother Louis and I have known each other since third grade and Louis and myself and David, Billy Winterburne and Johnny Abraham, the four of us, we sang Daydream Believe for the third grade in the talent competition because every third grade girl loved us and her family, I can go back to a hundred years, you know, and all the prosecutors, you know, Gina and Ken C. Dionne, everybody that has been working with you, I used to say, Paul Gaines, you know, I, I thought he just hired beautiful ladies, but he hired the most intelligent, the sharpest, the on top of things that have done a phenomenal job for every county, for, for every township, village, city that they represent on behalf of them, so thank all the ladies and the few gentlemen scattered in, you know, his law, you know, has done a good job, great job and, and Mark Diappolito, who has moved on to bigger and better things, has done a great job and I don't have my glasses on, is that, you know, is that the judge? I can't see that far, David. I can't see that far, David. I, I had my glasses and I left him in the office. David, you know, God bless you. You, you were the best county court judge that, that ever was. And he was a machine, a machine in Austintown. More cases went through Austintown Court than any court in the state, I believe. And you did a great job there. You did a great job, you know, as just embracing us in Austintown and to your Court of Appeals days. And now you get to coast with Mark, you know, administrator. You know, it's, it's just, you know, all good now. God bless you.
God bless you. I don't know who everyone's talking about because the guy I know, I don't have any good stories about here. Last 30 years, nothing good to say at all. So just wish you all the best, buddy. Just know I love you. I don't know why, I just know I love you.
Paulson? Uh, thank you. First, I'll start off on behalf of Director Audrey Morales at Dog and Family Services. Thanks for your leadership and your support. And for me personally, I've had the opportunity to work with you many pasties. I met you, I want to say probably over 12 years ago. And just being, you know, involved in a political realm, I've watched you and you are the true definition of community stewardess. Um, that kind of led me to be influenced. And I was able to sort of become a council. So even then, as a councilwoman, the collaboration we were able to do. And Dave, Ken similarly said, just the intellect, the education, the ideas, the drive, the ambition that you have is inspiring to everyone. I, I think you're wonderful. And I think that your legacy is going to be having an impact on the county for years to come. So I think we're very, very fortunate to have you. Easily welcoming in any capacity because you're a fantastic asset to the county.
You, not only the city councilperson personally, but you know, as a mom. Met, I met your mom, you know, when she got her knee replaced. And, you know, it was, you have a phenomenal family. It's easy to understand where, you know, then I met your brother. It's easy to understand, you know, where your intellect, where your education, where your talent has come from. You, just everybody around you is amazing people, are amazing people. You did a great job as a city councilperson. And right now, you know, moving into leadership role at JFS, I know we just hear nothing but amazing stories. Marty Morales, your job there and the assistance you've given us. So we're lucky that, you know, one door closed and another one opened. You know, everything for a reason. And I believe that wholeheartedly. I have, you know, no reservations of believing that. So God bless you. Thank you for being a part of our team.
Yes, on behalf of Port Authority, our executive director, Board Chair Martin Lowey, along with Sarah Lowne here. Port Authority, thanks for your service and so forth. I know you and Sarah worked really hard in reaching that hotel bed tax to use that, which really put a lot of energy into our Economic Development Division, made us do a lot of things that we are doing now for you and so forth. So thank you for your service. I really appreciate it. On behalf of my wife and the other elected officials of both the townships, thank you for your generosity from all the commissioners over the last couple of years.
Thanks. You and Sarah and Anthony and John before you, you know, just everybody there at the Port Authority. You know, the Marty Loney, oh my God. You know, the, the knowledge, the experience, the, the quality of individuals that have come to the Port Authority Board because of the Port Authority employees. You know, I mean, that wouldn't happen. You wouldn't, you wouldn't generate a Sam Cavelli, Ed Goransky. You wouldn't generate those, those quality of people on a board that didn't have, you know, Marty Loney on the board that didn't have the quality of people like yourselves working and pushing in the same direction. You guys freckin' on and doing a phenomenal job. The numbers are staggering. So God bless you all for being such great representatives of Mahoney, Trumbull, and the Valley, you know, because it's all the same, you know? And Marty, I, I can't say enough about you on both ends of the spectrum. Because working on the Port Authority, working labor, the education you brought to the table and the advice that you offer. The only time I see literal billionaires nominate and elect you chair and are able to cultivate the environment that moves us in the right direction. You know, you're amazing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And you know, the same goes, you know, without the vision of what you're able to do and put people together that check their egos at the door, that make sure that we're doing the work for the Valley. And you were spearheading of that. And it's really appreciated. You know, we were able to have some really good conversations about what we're going to do economic development wise, the county, the Port Authority, labor, all of that kind of came together. And we really appreciate everything that you've done over the years. And I'm very proud to be able to call you my friend. So.
Thank you. Any other elected officials or department heads?
Wayne. Dave, I just want to say thank you for believing in me 10 years ago. And the board, government's hard work, but there's a lot of compassion here. I always say campus security wasn't the easy thing to do, but it was the right thing to do. And whenever, wherever I go in Ohio, all people are surprised that all the systems work together. DD, CSP, mental health, EMA, we all work together. We had the easiest merger of the drug board and the mental health board in the entire state. We just merged. Everyone else was fighting and arguing. Somebody said egos are at the door. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Wayne, thank you because all people being a commissioner in Hermwich County or in, I said, Hermic Mercer.
Mercer County.
Mercer County. And, you know, you know, you know. So, I mean, the, the, everyone had five merging drug and alcohol and mental health boards together. And, you know, and when I got here, I said, how many boards aren't merged? They said, oh, just Columbiana, Mahoney, and Trumbull. And are three counties that I wasn't.
Like three in the whole state, yeah.
In the whole state, hadn't merged. And I, and I looked at everybody and said, look, if Mahoney, Trumbull, and Columbiana are the only ones that haven't merged, believe me, we're not all that young. You know, we are the ones that last in line, you know? And, and the whole thing was trust. You know, I mean, nobody was willing to give up their fiefdom unless they knew it was going to be put together and who was going to be in charge. And I think it took, you know, our board and Audrey and just people being able to assure everyone that it's going to happen just the way we said it will. You know, that it'll be transparent. And it was. And you've just been an amazing person. Gary Onesti, I've seen him in the back, spent on so many boards for us. And he's done a phenomenal job working side by side with you. And just, you know, there's, I, I could name every, every person on the boards that are, that are just phenomenal people like yourselves. And I look at you, Wayne, as, as I do Audrey Tellis. They're, you know, just two people that are good people, kind people, the right people that are the right persons. So. Smack dab.
I was one of those students, by the way, in Austintown, along with Diane. So I can attest to what Mr. Corano said. I echo Scott's sentiments on behalf of the clerk of courts. And many of our accomplishments, you were such an important part. It's been a lot said. You quoted a movie. I'm going to quote a movie. And I think you'll know, and I hope this means a lot to you. But James Cagney in Yankee Doodle Dandy, as George M. Cohen would always express his gratitude this way. My mother thanks you. My father thanks you. And I thank you.
Everyone here probably knows that people I don't love dearly. I mean, I just like people I don't love dearly. I don't usually have a name for them. You know, if I have a name for them, you know that you are a term of endearment. You know, smack dab. You know, she's a Fitch graduate. And she lived in, close to me in Austin. You and your family and family friends more recently than earlier. Her mom and dad, if you ever hear the term salve de hier, they're the salve de hier. I mean, they're how old now?
Eighty-nine and ninety.
And they call us. They go to the Ohio State football. They sit in front of the TV for games they're, they're not at. They are amazing, amazing, amazing people. And it's very easy to understand my candidacy is amazing too, you know? Because I love your mom and dad.
I love you.
I just want to thank you on behalf of myself. I, there was a time when people would essentially avoid the second floor in the admin building. And since, you know, you and, and I agree with you guys. I've been here. You've always been the voice of reason. As good as you are at telling the stories, you're also good at listening to them even when there's a difference of opinion. And I thank you for being my boss, my big brother, father figure as well. So appreciate you.
Thank you, Phil. You, you've done, you know, I look at you and Lou. It's two guys that, you know, and I add Lou in there because he's got COVID. You know, and he texted me this morning. He, he had to text me this little chart that showed he was positive. Now, but you and Lou, two departments that people don't realize how much you do, how much money you bring in, what good things you do for this ballot. You know, the whole ballot. Phil, I'm proud to have been able to work with you and see all the things behind the scenes. And then even to realize, you know, how close you were to friends of mine that have been, you know, my best, one of my best friends for life, you know, Lenny. And, you know, and Dan that worked with you that was married to Megan and I didn't know that. And all of those people that got to come here. And I'll never forget I was standing on, on Mill Creek number four, you know, and, and where our friend, our good friend Lenny Gessler died. And you and your family and, and Lenny's family and us drinking a shot of Crown Royal for Lenny. So you're a good person and Mahoney Valley is proud, Mahoney County is proud to have you.
Dave, I want to thank you for all we've done together. I want to thank you for being a friend, for being the best client I ever had. And for everything you've done for me. The county is really lucky to have you. We worked through COVID. Those were really strange times. And, you know, all the funds that followed. And I thank you for the experience we had together. Congratulations. You've had a good.
I would keep a closer eye on you in Austin. You better behave, you know, and send stuff. Now, my wife worked for your mother for a lot of years. Your mother was the store manager at Macy's. It's a hard mom. My wife spent 38 years at Macy's. And, you know, your mother's told me stories that I can't repeat about you. Not because they're bad, because you, you were like the choir boy in school. And you kept all the rest of the students and teachers. She wouldn't give Ken Corano a challenge if you were in my. You know, but a lot of good things. She did a great job. Spark was one of those people that, you know, if, if it was the water department, if it was the sanitary department, if it was this department, like John, you know, he had to become an expert guy in order to be able to, to guide us as representative of the county. And you became an expert in a lot of fields because you're, you're a very studious individual. You do a great job. You're doing a great job for us.
Well, thank you, David. Couldn't have done it without you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Diane?
Okay, I know, I'm going to be like you. I don't know if I'm going to get through this. I started working for Austintown Township in July of 92. And Dave ran and took office in January 1st of 1994. And aside from the first three months of you being a commissioner, when he walked in after three months, instead of taking Fry with me, this is going to be a big chapter change for me. But on behalf of the dog warden's office, the staff, and everyone, the animal advocates that have made themselves very known in this community, this board, what you've done and Dave, what you've done and spearheaded to get us that new building and to move us forward and change the whole perception of what a county dog warden is. There are words to thank you with. So congratulations on your new chapter.
So. Chapter's on. Diane, I went to high school together. I tell everybody she chased me all through high school. She was, and believe it or not, her name was Kirchbaum. She was in high school. So, you know, she, yeah. So, you know, us Germans, we, you know, we stuck together back then because there was a whole lot of us. Anyway, you know, everybody's name ended in a vowel in Mahoney County. Diane, you and Jeff. God bless Jeff. I can't say enough to thank you guys. You know, you were, you were the odd utilist in Austintown. You were a machine. You kept everything together. You, you helped so many, so many different. She worked part-time when she was township to the veterinarian clinic, always, always. And, you know, and we went through a lot changes and challenges, not only in Austintown, the county, the dog pound. And I've always looked up to you and looked to you for advice because you were a person of reason and always did the right thing. Your moral compass is, is straight as an arrow. You always do good things. You know, and I'll have more time to come up and, and feed the dogs. And, you know, and she, she tells everybody the story. You know, and I won't tell, I won't tell them what it references to. You know, I said that at the township. But she tells the story when I'm going through the dog pound and I walk into one of the kennels, you know, to give the dogs something. And those doors close on their own, you know, and they don't open from the inside. So I had, I had to call her on my cell phone and say, hey, come let me out of the kennel.
Well, she tells it out though. She just told me that story this morning.
I mean, I'll need that, I'll need that key, you know, more often now. I look at the kennel.
You mean that we can avoid the late night calls and screams?
Yes. You know, always good. I, I always have an ear. So for you. So thank you, Diane, for everything.
This year will be my 25th year here. But I met Ditzler when he came to my door right after I got married in 91. And I had this little house, my grandma's house on Route 46. And he was running for trustee. So I have some, some guy and I had a baby and he's screaming and he's screaming in the background. And he's knocking door to door. And it's the first time I met him. I asked her, I'm like, who's Scott? And, you know, but then, you know, you're my trustee. And I've lived in Austintown almost my whole life. And you're my trustee. And I liked you there. And then when you ran for office here. And the one thing I can say is not many people do, but you have. And so, and you can't help but let him. And he sort of just chips away at that hard exterior. Because when you do what I do, you have to be very cut and dry. And emotion doesn't play anything and decisions are made within certain rules. And you chipped away. And, and so we'll miss you. The one thing is you've made me a better, you've made, you chose to make me a department head. And you've set a, a certain, yeah, you set a standard for us to do where you do. You try to come in and you try to be nice. And that's really hard for me because you know it is. You can make it fun, but let me tell you, Jimmy was right. Let me tell you, you come into a meeting. You come into a meeting and you better have your numbers. That's why whenever I come into a meeting, I always have like all this stuff that not all the time do we have time to look at because you're, you're going to look at it and you may not have time to look at it then. But you're going to look at it a couple of days later and you're going to call me on it and I better be prepared. And you're one of the few people that really get interested in the stuff that I do as far as the numbers and, and this, and how it impacts the county as a whole. And, and I appreciated that because it's sort of boring to everybody else. But I just wanted to say I, I appreciate all the stuff you did. And you did, you were, you were fair, you were nice. Pulled egos at the door. But you made us want to work harder and chipped away. So, you know, we'll see, we'll see it tracks because you were very good to my family and my boy. So we just want to say thank you.
Kathy, not only worked here at the county and did the nice job, she also worked on behalf of the county. Kathy, not only worked here at the county, you did the amazing job, she also worked on behalf of the township. And helped us through, a lot of the work has accomplished, she, you know, was always on top of things and always advised us. And we were able to get through a lot of tough times, you know, because, you know, townships don't have that staff and that level of expertise. Kathy's one of the people that, you know, if you ask her, you know, I don't, I don't know what reference it is, but you know, if you ask her how to, you know, pick a hole, she'll tell you how to build the Hoover Dam, you know? So she goes into such detail and such information and such, you know, I enjoy the numbers. But sometimes, you know, I have to make sure that I don't open that door too wide. You know, she'll give them to me because she knows them better than I. So thank you. You and your family are just amazing as well. Thank you.
Alan. Commissioner, I just quickly want to say thank you. I know we don't have this extensive history together, like so many people here in the room do. But in the short amount of time we've worked together, you exhibit great leadership qualities. That is something that people look for in an organization. I will definitely follow through on the vision that the three commissioners have and I appreciate the opportunity to be.
Thank you, Deana. You know, just a short time, you've really been a breath of fresh air, you know, bringing in new ideas, new opportunities. You know, you're the right person for the right job. Not necessarily because we, we know of time, but we just know, again, this short time we've worked together, you know, you're good people. We want the right thing to happen. You bring good people aboard. You know, because one of the things I say, I used to say on a regular basis, you know, besides either, you know, by, in the words of my boy Spock, you know, the good of the many outweigh the good of the few, you know? But good people do good things. You could, you could train a person to do a lot of things, you can't train a person to be a good person. You found a good person to use.
So Dave, I just wanted to say, I've only been here a couple of years. So as with Deana, I don't have all these stories. But what has amazed me since I've been here is the fact that you can respond to everything. There's never a moment when you don't have a response. And I admire that a lot.
My wife hasn't.
So I just want to thank you for bringing me aboard and, you know, hopefully I'm gonna try to work towards learning some of that skill that you have. So, thank you.
Alan, you have, you know, being a military guy, you have the discipline, the fortitude, you know, and, and you, you two were the right person at the right time. And, you know, it's, it's been some challenges along the way, but at the end of the day, you know, we just want the right thing from Moaning County. And so do you. And you're moving the department in a good direction. So, thank you. It's been good working with you. I appreciate you immensely.
Oh, Jesse.
Jesse.
Okay.
Don't forget my girls.
Hey, I'm giving everyone, look at them. I'm making an announcement, all the sons and sisters. Jesse.
Oh, now wait a second. Not as important as everything else that went on here, but it was important to me. Okay? I had a situation and Jenny was at one of our JFK meetings. And I had an outrageous gas bill. All right, laugh at that. I did. I called up Handfield, I called up everybody and Dave contacted me and said, it's your information from the gas man, let him come. It was the third time to my condo. I'm gonna get to where I'm at. And Dave made two trips there and found out that my gas meter on the outside of my condo was not working properly. I mean, I was getting bills like a thousand dollars. And Dave told them, yeah, Dave said to the gas company that he needed them to get the, what do you call that? No, no, I got a new meter, but he wanted to see what they were.
An audit.
What did you say? Who said usage? I like that.
So no meter. We had them drive it.
No, with the usage, what, to make a long story short, because of Dave Ditzler, taking the time, I just, somebody like me, I mean, you know, I didn't get a gas bill for over a year because of the usage was so high. And they didn't give me a refund. But see, for somebody like me. That important. And Dave took, shows up second time. Bingo. Thank you. And Jenny too, because Jenny said, I can't help you. Good ass Dave. I love you. You're the best. Oh God, am I gonna miss you?
Well, you know what? You're, you're gonna have to, like, you know, I, I went over to Joyce's and, and, you know, we got all the road bills together. We got the gas company on the line and, and I told them I was one of the county commissioners. I'm helping one of the, and I only say this because we're both about the same age. You know, I said, I'm helping the senior citizens. This is ridiculous. So, you know, we were, we, we had her on the phone for hours, you know, over the different times on the phone. But, you know, I mean, you can't have a budget that's less than eighty dollars for five years and all of a sudden start paying a thousand a month. You know, it's ridiculous, you know, so. And then you have a condo set up where the gas line, the trunk line is on the outside of the third building down. And it goes through everyone's condo in their rafters to get to her condo because she's the last one in the row. And now you could have leaks that are going through people. You could have somebody that cut a line and, and tied their line together and her meter is being tied to theirs, you know? Anything could happen. So we wouldn't let them not come out and investigate, you know? So, no, it just took somebody, you know, and my wife says that, you know, I have a German temper, you know, and I, I really know and I have German passion. You know, and, you know, God bless you and.
Have the best day.
Luann and, and, you know, you guys have just done an amazing job helping me. You ladies are always there. And, and if anyone knows that, that I have a corner, the gas station on a corner in Kirk. And, and forty-six and Kirk. The, the young man that owns it, Mr., they call him Mr. B, right? B, B, E, E, I'm sorry. They had like fifty of my signs in, in thirty-five feet, you know? And, you know, I had to go over there and thank him. And when I walked in, he goes, whatever Joyce wants, whatever Joyce wants. But, you know, Joyce, Luann, you, you two are just amazing people. And if you, you don't remember them, they had second tours for a long time, Luann did, I know. And, you know, everybody knows those ladies because they're, you know, just pillars for our community. You've done a great job for a long time. So thank you so much.
Jesse? You sure?
Commissioner, I don't have a, a ton of professional interaction I can speak to, but I do want to say you were one of the three commissioners that hired me and you hired me at a very tough time in my life. I was, you know, but we were all going through a tough time. Coming out of a nasty recession, things were starting to get better. But I couldn't find any employment in my, in my, you know, area of study. I have a master's degree in library science. I don't fit the hair in the bun librarian type. So they weren't looking for a guy like me. I'm really loud too. But the long and short of it was, you guys gave me an opportunity. What I like to call, and what they say in sports, a prove it deal. Wasn't a lot of money, but it was an opportunity. And those that were here can recall that all the hallways in this basement were filled with boxes almost as tall as a commissioner anyway.
That's not real tall.
Well, right. And there was a pallet underneath too. We're not gonna get into the semantics, but I just wanted to say thank you. You improved my quality of life and my family's quality of life. All of you did, but I wanted to give you the credit. I hold you in very high regard. You, you built yourself up to, to where you are. You were a steel worker. You went to school. My grandfather, you know, sheet and tube killed him, literally. So to see you come up out of that situation and be where you are, I'm really proud of you. I don't know if people tell you they're proud of you, but I am. So I don't want to start crying and get embarrassed on television. So best of luck to you and thank you so much for.
Jesse, I'm proud of you too. I really am. You know, you've done a great job for us. You've helped us innovate, move forward and, you know, do the right thing down there. And you've taken, you know, some people that have been there a long time and who that's true. What was the woman's name? Poor Lucy, you know, you, you, you know, Lucy couldn't even open the door. You know, and then, you, you've come in and, and turned it into a real department and real good work comes out of it. You know, we're, we're, we're up in the top echelon of the, of the microphone end of it now because of a lot of the things that you've done. So, and you make great colochi. Your family's beautiful. I love it when I see you and your family out in the store. And I always make it a point to come up and say hello. They're just great people like you.
My son's upset. You were his favorite commissioner. My favorite commissioner was Commissioner Gordon from Batman. So. Burying myself here.
People's fine too.
Anthony, I didn't know Jeff wanted to say.
Who?
Jeff.
Please, if somebody wants to say something, I can't sit here and say, like, just stand up.
Jeff, did you want to say something?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself and my staff, working with us over the years to support. And not only for, you know, our, our actions here in the department. And also when you pull your permits for your additions, hopefully you're all done with all your projects out there. But I'm sure I'll get a phone call on some kind of code questions in the future and I would just wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, first and foremost, how's Jillon Perko?
He's actually out of the hospital. So he's doing well. You know, he was in the hospital for ten days. So he's got probably a little road of recovery at home for a while. But no, he's, I think he's over the worst of it. So he is.
You know what, Jeff? Thank you. You know, you've taken on such a role in our county. You know, going from, you know, the county doing inspector to incorporating the city and, and making it all work. And running that department as efficiently and as good as you have. You know what? I'm gonna keep my eyes open, you know, make sure that you get that, that bigger building at InfoCision. And, you know, and you can move over. We can get all the, the county entities that are in, in that field and under one roof. So Kenny, don't you go anywhere. I got something to say to you.
My, my wife just said, you know, an emergency. I'm gonna call it. I'll be right back.
Okay, okay. All right. But Jeff, you know, thank you so much. You, you've always been a big help. And I always, I found out, you know, about midstream that, you know, I, I've got to talk and get the facts first. Because you always have somebody called, I've been trying to get my permit for months and I can't get this. And you find out that it hasn't even been received yet, you know? So, you know, you, you've sorted out from the richest to the poorest with respect to getting permits. And, and helped everybody and, and really been there and been an advocate on behalf of what, what I always felt was the negative end at, at the township early on was that you don't throw up a gauntlet to inspect people as they go through the system. You're part of the system to ease them through the web of, of pain that they have to go through to get the permits. You know, and you've always been that person. So I thank you for always being an advocate on behalf of everyone. So you do a great job and I thank you for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, just real quick, yeah. David, I've really enjoyed working with you the past few years. I appreciate your commitment to everybody in Moaning County. And especially the care and compassion you give to people that are experiencing homelessness that might be in county. I've enjoyed working with.
Thank you, Callie. You, we haven't worked together a lot or that long, but, you know, I, we, we know that there's a need and there's a person in need. And that you're a right part of it because, I mean, you came from the city end of it and moved over to the county end of it. I mean, you were just part of the city, but now you're part of the county, but you always were part of the county of it. And, and, you know, we, we got a good eye opening when we get to, to sit down and really experience what you experience. You live it for the other, for people that are in need and you're a good person and you do. It's more than so many people could even imagine helping out. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Or anyone else?
If I may, I'm not gonna act official now, but.
You're always like this.
Giving a past councilman and mayor of Sebring. Dave and I had some conversations and his insight was greatly appreciated. And everything that he and the commissioners brought to the village of Sebring is greatly appreciated as well. And also I sit on the land bank with Dave and keep in mind, there's not assigned seats. So it always happens where I'm on one side of the table, Dave's on the other. And he brought so much enlightenment to that meeting. It's, it's unbelievable. But I want to wish you the best in your future endeavors, Dave. And you've been great for the county.
Thank you. You're, you're a good person and, you know, like I said, you and Mayor Pinkerton and Mayor Hart just, you know, are, you can understand. When you say that, you know, they're from the outlying areas, that's where, that's where all the action happens. You know, that's where, you know, good people are born and grow and good things for a long time. You know, and, and you're, you're one of those people. You're a good person. We thank you. Sebring's proud to have you and we're proud to have you in county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know the commissioners have a meeting, so I'll be short and sweet. That's all I can think. I can stomach us to be short and sweet without getting in trouble. I want to say, at the end of the day, after what, thirty-one, thirty-two years of government, you can hang your hat, be proud of what you've done. Nobody, I don't care what they said, what they've done or anything, can take that away from you. Because you know that you have had the heart of this valley and everything that you've done, everything you've said. In every meeting, every contract, every project, it has been because of the heart of the valley. Not for yourself, not for your own gain, for any reasons. It is for these people. And I appreciate it. I appreciate it as a citizen of Moaning County. I've visited, I appreciate it as an employee and as a team member and as a friend.
You know, Audrey.
For Audrey.
Now, when you look back in all the years, you know, that you get an opportunity to work with so many people. There's not many that rise to your level. Now you, so from, from the standpoint of people, of education, of being all those ethics, integrity, quality. I can go on for every action I can think of. You have instilled, that's like, when I got here twelve years ago, I said to Audrey, you know, Audrey, I'm gonna take you out to dinner. We can meet each other, talk things out. I said, you like Crown, what do you like to drink? Crown Royal, bourbon, wine? She said, never had a drink. And I said, what? Never had a drink? And she said, no, I've never had a drink. I said, yeah. And I said, Audrey, if you get through one term and I haven't driven you to drink, then I will take you out to dinner and, you know, and I won't drink, you know? So, and it's been twelve years and she hasn't drank. You know, and I, I don't know how, you know, but twelve years later, you know, you're, you're, you're the best person that, that I've worked with, you know, or at least in the top three anyway. Because there's, there's a couple others that I don't want to.
Molly, you guys put your name in there.
You know, you're always in the top. You know, God bless you for always, you know, she, she brings the, not only the nuts and the bolts, but the impact and the influence of the morality and the integrity, fortunately too. It keeps the ship going in the right direction. So, thank you, Audrey.
Well, I have to echo part of that as well, you know, and so on my own. Loyalty, respect and integrity. Loyalty, respect and integrity, those are the three big deals that's turned me. And with these, for not only this team of Mahoney County that we have, but for all the residents of Mahoney County. In my life, he's been an asset.
Gotta get that guy away.
At least somebody sees you.
But, um, he's a good friend, uh, to me and Frank. But he's been a team player, very knowledgeable about government. Yes, you did start growing, uh, as I started in Youngstown, as a woman. And it's, it becomes in a different level when you come from government and you've worked your whole life, just in that private sector. Um, and, and to have those three big things in my life, my father always said, you always be loyal, you always have your high integrity and you always respect people. He says, and if you have those three things and follow that through wherever you go in government, if you, because he knew I'd end up front of things. He says, you will always be successful, no matter what someone tries to rip apart from you. It will never happen because you will always have that. And you've demonstrated that. I mean, we fight, all think we're, we love each other, but we're gonna need, we fight by damn. But you know what? That's okay, because when you walk out of that meeting, you're a team. And you work for the veteran, not he and Anthony and myself, but for 265,000 people in Mahoney County. And that's what's happened here in this county. We've seen a change. Some maybe could say maybe not. We'll see. I will tell. But what I can say is having you as a partner has made a big difference in my life because there's always something else, issues off, whether it's the air or paint being filthy, the color, I mean, that. I kept driving back, so I said, don't be a hundred times, I'm gonna buy that. And Frank would be in the car going, are you out of your mind? I said, no, I don't wanna buy that building, I like it. But it's moving forward, not moving backward. That's what you showed me. He said, Carol, if you're not gonna move forward, you're falling behind. But you, you've been a good friend to me and my family and they love you and Frank wishes you the very best. And if you could be here, he would.
Carol, we, we go way back because she was city council when I was Austin. And, you know, we were always, we were always, um, on opposite sides of the fence back then, you know? Our surcharge on our water was too high, this was this, this was that, you know? And, and I understood what they, you know, what they were all about, but, you know, it wasn't helping Austintown residents and that's who I represented. So, you know, I always banged heads with her and she was, and she was the calming voice of the bunch, you know? So, and that's pretty hard to believe with the value and temper she has, you know? And, but, no, just like anything, you, you become friends and you embrace their family and you embrace everything, her, thank Bobby and the whole family. I mean, um, Carol's always been the person that's, you know, the advocate, the champion, you forget little guy. I know whether they've been, whether they've been child, whether they've been someone that's homeless, whether they've been disabled, veterans. I mean, she always championed people.
Yes.
And so that was always such an important part of everything we did. And she always asked that question first and she kept, you know, thinking of why we're all here, you know? And, and what's most important, you know? And, you know, she, she made me harken back to the things and, and make sure that that was a primary focus on what we did and, and, you know, Carol, you and your family and my family. And I love you, you know, you're just, you know, you'll, you'll be my friend, you know, around for as long as we're all, so thank God bless you.
And Dave, I have to, all of a sudden, it's here. You have all your fans here today. It was a beautiful turnout. Um, I have to say this. I have worked alongside many, many powerful people, uh, in my career. Uh, from my days in Washington DC, I can name every congressman, every senator, every president alongside Jim Traffington. And I've always looked at people, I don't care what position you hold, I don't care how much money you have. Those things don't impress me. They never did. But what does impress me is somebody's heart and their character. And that is something that Dave Wissler emanates, is quality, character and kindness. And that's all I ever wanted for a growth in this position. Somebody there that had a good heart. Dave certainly, certainly exemplified having a good heart. Talked about his mother, his family, the things he wants to do. Dave had an unusual pedigree. Not only did he understand government, Dave, thank you for teaching me a lot of things about that I thought I knew and I didn't know. Dave is a master of local government and, uh, when Dave would start talking numbers and everything, I would sit there and listen, start writing things down. But Dave worked for the private sector. I came from the private sector. Everybody thinks that I was strictly in government my whole life, not true. My family owned a real estate company and a trucking business. I had that in, uh, of a life. And Dave can appreciate what it is, uh, in the private sector. So that's something we had in common. We also had in common that Dave likes old classic cars. Uh, he's a way better collector and, uh, than I've ever been, and we like the same music. So every time we would have a staff meeting or, or we would have any types of meetings or functions, Dave always brought a certain amount of levity to the, to, to the conversation. In other words, you know when Dave came in the office, he was carrying his coffee cup, spilling it on his hand, two cell phones and everybody out of the pool. That's, that's what he would say. But he made things exciting for me. He took the edge off. Did we always see eye to eye on everything? No, and I don't think nobody does. But in the end, he was always there if you needed something. I know if I was down and out, I could go to Dave and ask for the help and I'm sure that he would have. He gave me that impression. I've known him a very long time and we were on the opposite sides years back. Uh, I don't wanna get into that, but we were and we have become friends, uh, ever since Dave came into the commissioner's office. And he was a breath, a fresh air. And I don't see this as a goodbye. I see you, Dave, with a whole new start in life. You'll get to do more things you wanna do. And he'll probably be more active now than he was when he was here. And, and I believe him, he works very hard. And I have to say that about him. I'm gonna miss that, Dave. I really am. And door is always open to you in this office. I just want you to know that. And I wish you all the best, my friend.
You know, people don't realize that, um, they, when I, when I remind people or that don't know that, uh, they're going, really? You know, but in 2004, there was an open seat in the commissioner's office. I was trustee in Austintown and Anthony and I ran against each other. You know, and Anthony, he beat me for county commissioner in 2004, took office. And it was like, uh, good news, bad news, you know? Bad news, I felt bad, I lost. Good news was they lost the sales tax at the same time in Mahoney County in the fiscal emergency. So, you know, so Anthony spent the next, you know, basically 10 years trying to recover, you know, and trying to turn the county around, you know? So, uh, and I remember, I remember when I got elected in 2012. Um, if you were, uh, around Sam Traffington, Anthony's father. He was a man of very few words. And when you looked at him, when you talked to him, you knew you respected him, listened to him, took some place. And I remember when I got elected, he came up to me and he looked me in the eyes and he said, I don't like you. He said, I don't like you. He said, you ran against my son. He said, you said bad things. And, and I, I said, I apologize if I said something, you know, that's disrespectful. I hope to change your mind. And years went by, years. And Mrs. T, I always called her Mrs. T. She was a lovely woman, just lovely. And you could tell, hardworking, Texas, so Texas, right, you know, rode horses. No, she was, she was tough. And, and above, like maybe six years into it, maybe my second term, um, Mr. Traffington gets up to me and he shakes my hand. He goes, Anthony likes you, respects you, I like you. This is, we move forward. And, and it's probably, uh, the most respectful, insightful thing that someone could have said to me at that point in time, you know, and, and it gave me comfort, you know? Because, you know, you never want somebody to have that, you know, interest you were feeling about you, about who. And I knew, working with Anthony, how important it was for family. You know, that's one thing that you have to love all the time. You know, family means everything. Family means everything. And, you know, and Anthony is, for 12 years we've worked together, he's treated me like family. And, you know, he'd always say, hey, you can come to work for my trucking company. You can come to work here, you can come to work there. That's true. You know, if you ever need a job, you, you can come to work for us. So God bless you, Anthony. He treated me like a brother, you know? Dave, we met, uh, in the world.
We turn it over to you.
It's my, my brother, my other brother Anthony, or Andy walked in, you know, and, and I have to touch real quick on Andy Frost. The Frost family in Mahoney County are just amazing people. His dad, uh, was, educated me more than, than anyone, uh, Mike Bertilaki and Andy Frost. And they probably, uh, gave me the most wisdom. Then Ken Corano, you know, he, he tried to, you know, straighten me out along the way, you know, and, and point me in the right direction. But, um, no better, better people, no better families than those. Thank you for being here. I didn't know, except I thought he left and he came back.
Yeah, I can't, I, I, I just can't say enough, everything you've done for our family, for Austintown, for county, EMA and the first responders, uh, you've done so much for all of us and I just, I can't thank you enough.
You're a good friend. And it's easy to see where it came from because, you know, there's, how many brothers are your father, your brothers?
Eight, six.
Six, six. How many in the family had, two, did he have sisters?
No, all brothers.
Just all brothers. You know, I, I, I really thank everybody for being here. You know, I had things I wanted to say, but I think that everybody is, um, you know, unable to interact, say most, you know, wanting to, but, you know, it's been 31 years. And I have worked on a board of three, 31 years. Now, I started working in the steel industry in 1976 out of high school. You know, I learned real quick, you know, like Jesse said, that I didn't wanna work as steel. You know, so I went to night school for seven years, you know, and I opened a nightclub in Youngstown when I lost my job. You know, and, um, and 23 years old. Then, you know, to work for steel company because nightclubs, you don't make money every day, you know, I need to make a ghost. So, um, I wish my wife was here. Jenny has been, um, wouldn't be here to step away. Um, my wife is very emotional. If you know her, most people do. You either hear her laugh coming in or you'll hear her cry. And she didn't wanna cry today. So she's not here because she said she cried. So, um, but everything is about people, you know, in any job you do. It's about, um, respect. It's, it's about communication, you know? So, the, you know, I've worked 35 years in the private sector and steel industry and, you know, I won't get into that, but, uh, it's been a passion, you know, it wasn't my initial passion. You know, I wanted to be an attorney, I went to law school, P for, you know, for law. And changed directions when I got into the steel industry because back then, you really didn't do what you wanted to. You did with what made you a living and, you know, what you were, what arena you were in. So I changed directions and went into that and really, uh, got baited to run for trustee. No, actually, I, well, God bless my father. My father ran for trustee twice in Austin, died in Boston. Um, and he probably was the emphasis of why I ran. And Jenny and I got married in 93. And the, in the words of Mike Bertilaki, the flood of June of 93, you know, that's when all the homes flooded in Austintown. Well, one, one of them was my home, my mom and dad's, you know? And one of them had literature in it that my dad talked about fixing the water problems in Austintown from 15 or 20 years before my house flooded. And it was the same area. So I went to a trustee's meeting and one of the trustees there said, it just so happened, one of the trustees there who beat my father 16 years earlier, right, said, if you think, you know, kind of callously, if you think you could do a better job, run for office and fix it yourself. So I did. Wow. So, um, my wife and I walked thousands of homes, thousands. And we just got married in April of 93, or March of 93, sorry, I got my knees replaced. March 20, I knew that day, Jenny honest. And, uh, we walked door to door and she, she climbed into that arena, you know? Got elected in November of 93, January of 94, you know, we sat down and worked on the problem. And, you know, in fact, that was, you know, and I was 37 years old, early 30s, you know? Passionate about everything and, you know, you know, just full of fire, you know? I, I learned really on that, you know, listen to the people that have been there. You know, Andy Frost's dad, Andy Senior, Mike Bertilaki, they taught me a lot. Uh, and, and Anthony says that I was bringing levity, I tried to bring levity, but sometimes levity, I think it's levity, maybe, maybe, uh, you know, a bird under someone else's snail. I'll never forget, you know, Andy Senior, there's a picture on the wall from the first fire department in Austin town. And it was like from the bucket brigade, the 1800s, you know? And, uh, you know, Andy, Andy and I got into a little bit of disagreement. And, you know, we were at a table where there was quite a few firemen went out there. And he, he was saying this or saying that and I wasn't paying attention. I said, Andy, is that the first fire department? Which one of those are you? You know, and, and, uh, he goes, come here. Walked outside and he goes, I'll kick your ass. Said, I'll fix that ass. And, and, uh, and I, and I looked at him. I knew he would. And we walked back inside and, you know, and I, and I learned, you know, I learned. And, and I realized that, you know, uh, serving on a board of three is all about communication, cooperation, respect. And, you know, if two of you sit down and talk, you know, the third one doesn't get the opportunity to add value or to give you the opinion or change scenario. And everybody has an opinion that you may not have thought about. You know, and, and I learned that, um, you know, the people that are elected, people that work, people in apartments, people in community, community leaders, labor leaders, business, everybody looks at things from a different perspective. And if you don't encompass all of it into that thought process, you're doing people you serve a disservice by not taking their vision into, into consideration. You know, I, I, I always looked at myself as someone that tried to unite the boards we were on because, you know, I, I was trying to write down, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, I work. because, you know, I, I was trying to write down, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I worked, or I served Austin, Austin trustee for nineteen years. And there's, uh, seven trustees I served with in nineteen years. I had ten first, Mike Anteloff, O. Richard, Richard Leesold, Jeff Groth, Jim Davis. Yeah. I don't know if I missed one, Andy, did I miss one? Um, and, uh, and then just in my, in my twelve years as county commissioner, this is it. This is my family, this is my life, this is my college, you know, and, and believe me. You know, everybody comes from a different perspective of what they believe should and shouldn't be done. And unless you cooperate and unite people, I mean, look at our federal government, look at our state government. You know, we're not, we can't drive to Columbus and put rose-colored glasses. We can't go to Washington, and we can't vote on things that nobody knows what you do from the only black people. And they went down and voted against what we all stand for. We, we took the disabled from, from Youngstown to Dog Valley Center to Columbus. And governing body cry at the sight of what was going on. As soon as you took the people in wheelchairs that were impacted out of their vision, they voted no. You know, but Anthony, Carol and I, Andy and I, seven people I served with, we don't have that. We, we aren't the ground level of help, people are neighbors. You know, nobody ever cared if I was a Democrat or Republican, and they just said, fix my flooding. You know, we fixed the flooding, paved the roads, we opened the first community center, we opened the first senior center. You know, we negotiated, ran Ray Seino when I was in Austin Town. We had police chiefs and, and, and fire chiefs and safety forces, and, and all the department heads were amazing people. And when I got to the county, we had the same thing, you know. But I, I remember one of them told me, hey, be careful what you do at the county level, because it's different at township level. They don't wanna just oppose your ideas, they wanna hurt you. They wanna hurt you, you know, from start to finish, because nobody likes anybody that's elected, you know, in that position from other communities, you know, and, and, you know, and my outlook was to, to try and make sure that I, I treated everybody the same, and, you know, if it wasn't, who were you sided with? Because that was really a question at, at all levels, is that who are you with? You with Anthony, you with Carol? Well, I, I, I don't know, give me, give me an, I, you know, a, a position on it, or give me a topic, and I'll tell you what my position is. But I asked them, you know, fine. So, I mean, like, like we said, we, we differ on things. But, you know, you don't throw stones at people, you know, differ publicly, you know, look like the Congress and the state legislature, you know, you, you, you've gotta make sure you embrace each other, you communicate, you do the right thing, you're well behaved, you're serving. Because, you know, I walk into a store, people know you, and they say, hey, you know, how'd you do this, how'd you do that, you know? When, when people ask me, are you a Democrat or Republican? I'd say, what, what topic you wanna talk about? Because I don't vote on immigration, abortion, gay rights, I don't vote on any of that. You know, the things that are important in those divisions, we don't vote on at the township. We had people sitting here, how many, how many months telling us, you know, put the frac in the Mahoney County? And finally, we said, we'll never put a permit out, never, for the frac in the Mahoney County. And they looked at us and said, wow, really, you won't? And then the other guy said, they don't give permits, and I said, the state does. And I said, exactly, so why do you come to our meeting and holler at us? You know, go to the level of where it's impacted, you know, so. The things that do impact you on a regular basis, we, we have a say-so over. And, you know, it takes all of us incorporating trustees, you know, and, and city council, and, you know, the mayors and the villages, and just everyone, you know, to try and go in the right direction and in the same direction. And, you know, I've been blessed to be on a lot of boards that did, that, that worked in the right direction. And I tried to be the one that united them and, and to make sure that, you know, we didn't air our differences in public and, and make ourselves look dysfunctional. Because, you know, when, when you're dysfunctional, you turn people on all government, you know, not, not just you. You know, you, you turn them on everything that we're all about, and we try to ensure that we don't emulate our daily lives or our daily work. So, um, God bless all of you, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing everything move in the right direction, because we worked in harmony for a long time, you know, not, you know, not necessarily all the same ideas and thought process, but we got a lot of things going on, you know, I hope you keep, you know, rotating people and, you know, making sure that we all are part of it, you know, that all the commissioners are part of it. I have no ill, well, feelings about, um, a new commissioner coming in. You know what, I'll, I support everything that, that the boards do. Uh, you know, I give my opinion, I embrace their authority, because none of these seats belong to us, it's down to the residents of Mahoney County, you know, and, and, you know, the people speak, you know, that's, that's what we move on. But sometimes I, I say, you know, we get the government we deserve, you know, and, you know, that's, that's what we have, that's what we're doing, uh, that's the decision, and we move forward, and hopefully, you know, I, I never wanna see any government fail at any level, because it hurts us all. You know, so, keep the ship running in the right direction, you know, treat each other well, you know, embrace each other, embrace the opportunity, new ideas, um, you know, move us into a position. Make sure that we, uh, we look for another building for the bigger departments in the city, you know, for the large departments, the JFS, the children's services, you know, in the, in those departments, you know, the ownership of buildings and, you know, make it on behalf of all the residents, not all of the politics, so. Thank you, everybody, you know, especially all you that stuck around two hours later. God bless you, God bless you.
I think it turns to say anything bad about Nancy.
LaFoy has, LaFoy has been the, uh, the rock in the corner, always there for all of us, thank you, Nancy.
Well, listen, before we adjourn, I wanna wish everyone a very happy and safe New Year. And I'm gonna let Dave Bissler close the meeting out, David, if you would.
All right, well, for the last time, maybe, picking the last. You know what, who knows what's in store, who knows what, uh, life brings us, you know? I may get mad at a flood that happens, and, you know, decide I have to, uh, come and put my finger in the diaper, right? So, anyway, motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bissler.
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy again.
Yes.
Commissioner Trappacani.
Yes. Thank you so much, all of you, and lucky.